We'll know after the meeting.[48.51][48.51](laughter)
Good afternoon, everyone. Today's Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, and we're here for a work session. And we're going to start with the pledge. Catherine, can you please take the lead?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Catherine. We have a few announcements today. This Saturday, our recreation department is holding the 24th Annual Snapper Tournament at the Riverfront. Registration begins at 10:00 a.m., and it's free to all anglers under 15, and $20 for people, those anglers 16 years and older. The tournament runs from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., and we will be holding, it will be a great afternoon of fun activities for everyone involved, and we hope to see you there at the Riverfront. Then after the tournament, from 4:00 to 8:00, all are encouraged to come down for the first ever Oktoberfest.[113.61][113.61](applause) Yes, we're having one. It's also on the Riverfront, and there'll be live music, and food, and contests, and all types of family fun activities.
Frank will be there in Lederhosen.[123.81][123.81](laughter)
Don't be surprised.
Wear your hat. In addition to Oktoberfest, the reflections exhibit at Grand Joubel Park will be open until 10:00 a.m., or 10:00 p.m. As you can see, Saturday will be a great day, and we also at 11:30 have the homecoming parade.
That's right.
So that's going to be really interesting, and we hope to see everyone there also.
Sorry, go ahead. I thought you were done.
Lastly, the next meeting for the comprehensive plan will focus on Wading River and Manorville, and will take place on September 27, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. at the senior center on Shade Tree Lane in Akleborg. The meeting will be in person, and also you can access it through Zoom, and we hope that we hear from all the residents. Your input is critical. This is your plan. This is your plan for the next 10 to 20 years. Okay, well now, Catherine, did you have something?
I just wanted to also chime in that we have a townwide litter pickup this Saturday. It's from 8:00 to 10:00, and we still need lots of volunteers, so if you could show up on Saturday morning at 8:00, we've got all the equipment you need, and let's get out there and make our town even more beautiful. Thank you.
Where do they show up, Catherine?
Oh, here.
Did I forget to say that?
Here at Town Hall?
At Town Hall.
Okay. Okay, we're going to begin our first discussion item, which is matters surrounding Scramble Runway Challenge, Chapter 255 at Epcal. The applicant and the promoter, Andre Baxter, is here today with us, along with Chief Hegomila, the town attorney, Bob Kozakovich, and our fire marshal, Craig Sidik. And we'll hope to button up some of these blue stands and see where we are with this application. The event is two days away. And Baxter? See you. Hi, how are you? Good morning. Can you come forward, please? I know there's been a lot of updates back and forth, and things have changed since the application was approved, and I just want you to give us an update, please.
All right. Well, initially, when we submitted our application, we were using both runways. Right now, we're currently going to be using runway 1432, which is a 10,000-foot runway. And the other changes that have been made was parking was going to be on the taxiway. We now have parking on the runway itself in the center, where we have space to do parking for spectators and for our participants.
Anything else has changed?
No, that's basically the main changes for the event.
Okay. I wanted to ask you, at one point, there was a discussion on rolling races?
Right, initially, we were doing...
You just explained to the public. Go ahead.
Yes, initially, we were doing a rolling, well, we're still doing a rolling race, but initially, it was going to be a half-mile-long rolling race. That was to take place on runway 523. We're no longer doing that because of safety concerns and for other reasons. So the rolling race will now be a quarter-mile, which is the same distance as our standard standing race.
And what is a rolling race? Because I'm not familiar with it.
A rolling race is when the participants start at a speed of about 35 miles per hour, as opposed to starting from a standstill.
Okay. I know we've been going back and forth, and I know that recently, you stated that there might be a one-third of a mile race, and yesterday, it was stated that you might be going...
We were considering that, but we looked at it, and it's not going to be feasible for where we are, so we're doing the quarter-mile.
Okay. And the, I noticed on your rules and regulations, you stated that the cars had to be inspected by the drivers or third party. Are you not inspecting the cars?
We are inspecting every car. We were telling drivers that they should have their car prepared, and they should self-inspect it, and then when they arrive, we're also going to do a secondary inspection before they're allowed to take their car on the track.
Okay. And how many tickets have you sold so far?
Well, we have 400 drivers participating and 500 spectator tickets.
At the moment?
Well, that's it. We're limited to 1,000 attendees, so we're not adding any more.
And what happens if it rains?
We have a rain date on the schedule for October 2nd and 3rd, which was in the application.
Okay. And one of the biggest concerns that I had was, I received last Friday from the attorney's office, I received a release of waiver of liability assumption and of risk indemnity agreement. And this would seem like this was, it was signed by you, but this should be coming from the insurance company. It was a little concerning to me and other individuals. It says that the drivers are acknowledging that there's a high risk of injury, and that the conditions are not up poor, and it does not contain a dedicated drag strip. There are concerns with water, fluid leak, current rainfall, there were bushes, there were trees, and, Bob, I'm going to ask you to come up, because usually, a liability prob, I'm not an attorney, but I'm not sure if an insurance company is going to ensure a drag race with these conditions, and I don't see the form from the actual company. And, you know, it's a little concerning to ensure that the insurance company is, in fact, ensuring these conditions.
And Bob, I would also like to know if you're going to talk about that. I would also like to know whether the other race had something similar. I'd like to know if the Mistress Goslow had a similar thing. I'd like to be able to compare the two and see if they were similar.
I actually got a copy of a proposed, or what the other race venue did for a waiver. Theirs was a one-page waiver form.
Did it mention some of these same things?
No, they didn't, theirs was not as extensive in the disclosures, it's my understanding, because we were provided a copy of the original application that was made to the insurance company, that this waiver form was submitted to the insurance company before the application was made to us. Therefore, the insurance company has reviewed it. We've reviewed it, and that waiver was part of the initial application made in January of this year. The other things that have developed, the size of the security crew is being increased to 20 personnel, who'll be on site all the time. So originally, it was 15, that's been increased to 20. Also, in order to be on the same par with the other event, Scramble was asked to increase their insurance coverage. We've been provided a certificate of insurance that raised the limits from 1 million, 2 million, to 1 million, 5 million. That was provided to us. The adjoining property owner, Riverhead Building Supply, had some concerns. As a result, we added their business entities, I shouldn't say "we," they, provided us with a certificate of insurance that also names Riverhead Building Supply Corp., as well as, I think it's River Edge LLC, as additional assurance. That was sent to us yesterday, and I've provided a copy of that to the Riverhead Building Supply folks, so they are aware that that's been done.
What was their concern, Bob?
Well, they technically own half the taxiway.
Oh.
We have an easement, but they own technically half of it. So as a result of that, and the onsite inspection we did on Wednesday, and I think, I'm going to let Mr. Baxter speak to that, but the understanding is that the cars that are returning on the northwesterly portion, when they're coming back from where the Berman Boulevard bissection occurs, they will be directed to the right, I mean, to the left, so that they're traveling over the CDA portion of the taxiway and will not be entering upon the Riverhead Building Supply portion. That's, it's one car at a time. Cars are limited to a 10 mile an hour return. When they are returning back to the area where they'll obviously let the cars cool down and then continue to race. There is a tech center that's been discussed with the applicant a number of times. I know that the paperwork that's been provided through the waiver doesn't mention that, but the documents that have been submitted to the town, the police, myself, and the fire marshal do, in fact, indicate that there is going to be a third-party tech inspection done by the event promoter to ensure the cars are meeting safety protocols. They will be inspected to ensure that there's mufflers on them as well, because, and that was the condition of it, all the agreements and all the discussions that we've had with Scramble. I know there's been some discussion about the helmets, or there was some reference to helmets. I did a little bit of research. It's my understanding they're going to use a SNL model. I think it's an SA 2010 or better. I quickly went on the NHR website, and that is a helmet that is found to be within the NHRA protocols. So that I also verified, so that's something that they are providing and requiring all participants to wear. Cars traveling at a higher speed will have fire suits and roll bars. That's something, again, that's in accordance with the NHRA standards. Any other questions?
So Bob, were some of the changes needed because the cars are, there are all those cars stored up there? Did that have anything to do with...
That had no impact, because that was all of seven, we had...
It had nothing to do with the change?
Scramble had already, had already agreed to reduce the track usage from the two runways to the one before Ida came. So that was, the give on the 7,000-foot runway had occurred prior there, too.
Did any new issues come up because races had already been run, and some, you know, perhaps red flags came up on a few things that had to be tweaked?
There are things that have been brought out as a result of the prior events, such as, you know, providing a lane of travel for electric scooters, or, you know, racecar teams sometimes following the cars, and making sure that they're not running around without some sort of control, because I understand from the first event, a lot of the folks that come there with the trailers, they'll have either go-karts, not go-karts, golf carts, or vehicles that they will follow their teams with in order to get the readings and to see how they launch, and to see what they need to do to adjust the cars. It's a lot of tuning that's done. I don't know if any of you watch Street Outlaws or any of that stuff, but you'll see that they have the laptops on the cars, and they're playing with them, they're fiddling with them, they're working with the oxygen and the gas and all the other things, you know, boosting the turbos, et cetera. So that was something that was brought up. It's been discussed with Mr. Baxter. Lieutenant Egan, from what I understand, has some drag racing background, so he's been very involved with this to ensure that things that he has seen and been familiar with during his years are being addressed. So that has been, he's been actively involved in the discussions.
He was out with the decibel meters as well.
And we're going to be doing that again.
Okay, good.
All right?
Also, the barriers concern, that...
Yeah, the, it was never part of their application from the get-go. They didn't show it when the original plan was submitted to the town board. And again, this is something that's akin to a slipstream type of application. I understand these are done around the country, and I know this one that was done upstate New York. I can't recall the location where they take a runway, and they do these type of races without barriers being for the whole distance. Spectators will be protected by barriers, as well as a fence that'll be set back, similar to what Mr. Scouso did, so that spectators will not be anywhere where a car would come into accidental contact with them.
Bob, the last event had barriers on both sides.
I understand that. That's an NHR sanction standard.
All the way past the end, the slowdown.
That's because...
And that's a little bit concerning at the moment, if you're just going to have 200 feet, a car, you know, two cars that crash, it goes into the grass, you can have casualties from it, I understand. We did have one accident. We had a scrape, but we did have one accident. I was there that night, and the car hit one side, hit the other side, it was contained. The airbags deployed, and the driver was able to walk away, not having anything on, and that race was a minimum of 115 miles an hour. The driver, I believe, was going around 90 miles an hour. A car going 175, almost doubled this distance with no protection. And what, one of my concerns is that, we received this letter yesterday, Catherine, you received a copy of it, and the town board has received it, and it's from an individual, M.S. Scannell, and he states he's an engineer by trade, he's a mechanical engineer, he's employed by, as a safety engineer in Bowling Springs, PA, and he questioned the liability, apparently, and he believes that, you know, there's a good possibility under these conditions that there's going to be, you know, grave injury and that possibly. And have you received a copy of this, now, Bob?
I was provided a copy of it. I, in fact, have had a number of back and forths with this particular person. He raised the question on the SNL helmets. As I said, the SNL helmets meet NHRI standards. As far as the waiver of liability, I'm a little bit at a loss as to why a more lengthy waiver of liability is worse than a shorter waiver of liability, to be honest. I'm a little confused by those comments, and I still don't understand them, and I have not been able to get a direct answer back from anybody why that's an issue. I think more disclosure to an applicant to tell him the risks is better than less disclosure. But that's, that's my view. That's the legal issue. As far as, as far as the barriers, I can't address that. I'm not a drag racer. I've never drag raced, except maybe illegally once or twice with my brothers down Roanoke Avenue.
Many years ago.
Statute of limitations, statute of limitations is gone, so I'm fine. Couple nights after softball games, actually. But I don't know the barrier issue. All I know is that we were provided with numerous examples of where this is done around the country without barriers, and those events have been able to be done. Again, I think the difference is, this is not receiving NHRI sanctioning. I don't know how to otherwise address that. I know that this is something that you've asked, and we found nothing that, you know, seems to require this as an absolute necessity.
So I, yeah, I agree with you, Bob. I'm a little confused why there's questions when they're actually increasing. It seems that they're actually increasing some security things.
Well, they have increased security. We've been provided with, you know, plans. When we've had questions, the plans have been revised to address those concerns, and I will defer to the fire marshal and the chief on the police protocols and the fire marshal protocols. My understanding is the ambulances, the ambulance service is set up, they're going to have, I think it's up to five ambulances. So there's going to be sufficient medical personnel there. They have two dedicated teams from the Manorville Fire District with two dedicated tanks, I think maybe three, trucks. So those, those were, you know, critical components, certainly the EMS aspect and the fire matic aspect, and I know that the requests made by the fire marshal have been We, I think we all have to acknowledge that, you know, racing at any speed is a risk, so I'm not sure how to totally get rid of that risk, but I was the same.
So one thing I wanted to ask you, Bob. I think you said that the, this whole, the situation with the barriers, that was already, that was in there from the beginning, right?
The original, the original plan did not show, did not show barriers for the entire length of the track. And in fact, as indicated, the early plan showed a one-half-mile race, which has been eliminated, and I concur with Scramble's comments that the one-half-mile race, it did concern me, going on websites and looking around, because the fact of the matter is, once you start getting over, as I've learned from just looking at this, over 160, 170 miles an hour, you start getting into aerodynamic issues and concerns. This is, this is, again, a quarter-mile and a one-eighth mile, so the one-eighth mile, the likelihood of cars achieving any greater speeds is very limited, because, again, it's going to be a 660-foot distance race. So, you know, and these are street cars, no Pro Mods, no dragster-type of cars will be allowed. Again, it has to be a car that could, that is registered, or would otherwise be able to be registered and inspected, if it's, if, similar to what was going on with Mr. Scouso's event. So these, these are the same type of vehicles. So I'm not, and mufflers are, again, identified in all the agreements, if they don't have a muffler, they're going to be told to leave.
So a couple things. Certainly, I have always been very clear that I wanted, from the beginning, that I wanted everything worked out and figured out prior to approving all of these events, not just Mr. Baxter's, but Mistress Goslow's. I was, you know, very strong on that, I wanted things looked at carefully. So what I don't understand, and I'm going to ask the supervisor this, the barrier situation was already like that, so if that was an issue, why wasn't that addressed prior to this event being approved? Why is that being brought up at this point when that was clear that that was in there already?
I mean, I think I can answer that kind of question.
Well, I wanted to ask the supervisor.
Because it came to us, it came to us about a month ago, and we started looking at it, and we've been investigating it.
Yeah, and also, we've learned from the prior race, there are lessons that you learn from a race, and I'm starting to get concerned, I was under the impression, when it was approved, and you approved it also, that...
No, I...
Yes, you did. You approved that after you...
But I, well, I...
Yes, you did. Okay, let's just not go back and forth. Let's just get to the, get back to the, you know, get back on topic here. And I witnessed the accident, and I realized that if a car is going twice, and if maybe we should re-entertain this and look at the safety component. I know that you mentioned earlier, this was security. Security has nothing to do with, with, with safety of the actual drag races. There's been a lot of changes going back and forth. I'm concerned with the waiver, and this is critical. I'm not signing a waiver that says that you have trees and that you're on your own, and it didn't come from the insurance company. We never addressed noise. We learned that there was some complaints of noise from the last drag racing. What happens, noise? You're having two tracks now. We have lessons learned, and we move forward with the next event. You cannot blindly go and say, whatever happens is a go. That's a concern I have. I drove by the location yesterday, there's approximately 300 tires there. What are the tires for? Is that going to be part of the safety? What are they being used for? And they have to be removed. These are all conditions and things that are happening as we're going forward with this event. I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten, you know, we got this email from an engineer. Doesn't mean, because we approved an application, that we stop. We owe it to the taxpayers to protect the town, and if there's a high incidence of injury and/or death, what happens if somebody gets critically injured?
It's...
We let the races go, two at a time?
And just to go back, I actually abstained, even though let me...
With all due respect, a lot of this is speculative, as to whether there's a high risk of injury or death.
Okay.
I mean, I, with all due respect, I mean, these events go on all over the country, half-mile runs, so whoever's reaching out to you and making those comments, I don't know what their basis is. Have they cited statistics? Have they given you anything to support that statement? We can all make conclusory statements. I can say that that wall is green, but it's not. I mean, I, I don't know how to address it, and that's something maybe you address with the applicant, but, but again, we've looked at this. I've spent countless hours looking at this. I know that the chief has spent countless hours. I know the fire marshal has spent countless hours. He received the 255 approval, he received the resolution that granted him an agreement. I'm not sure what else to say.
So I just want to clarify, I actually abstained from this because I feel that, I'm aware that people in the community really enjoy the racing. I just wanted to make sure that we did work out all the details prior, I was clear about that. So certainly, that's the point I'm trying to make. In moving forward, I think, you know, if we have concerns, they should be addressed prior to approval. Do I think that at this point, we need to tweak some things, because things were learned from the previous race? I'm in agreement with that. Certainly, safety first, and we want to do whatever we can to keep the community safe, the people attending safe, and we want things, events in our town to be successful, so.
Okay, Catherine, just to correct, you did abstain from Mistress Gosso, and you approved the...
Both of them.
This one. It's okay, we're not going to go back and forth, we need to move on.
Well, it's important for me, it is important for me, as a council member, to make sure that correct information's being put out there. I just wanted to correct that.
Okay.
So specifically, what are you looking for him to do, Catherine?
My, my point is, we need to be cautious. These, this was already in the plan. We should be addressing things now, yes, but moving forward, these kind of things should be addressed prior to approval, approving events. That's my point. But certainly, I'm not going to say that these things shouldn't be corrected at this point. It is safety first, and we want events such as this to be a success.
I want to hear from the two uniforms in the back of the room.
Yes.
The parts to the safety plan, and whether it's been approved.
Again, I think that's the more appropriate part is to hear from them.
Yes.
I can't address that.
Thank you, Bob. Chief, and Devin?
Yes.
The chief's coming up?
Yeah, I was going to do that, but we have a chat right now.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you were waiting. Okay. Hold on a second.
Just a second. Excuse me.
We just have to announce that it's the chief's birthday, so we just felt we should...
Happy birthday, chief.
I'll honor you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, and you're blushing.
Oh, no, that's like anger that I run over. She'll get hers, don't worry.
I'll protect her.
Okay, so where we stand right now, I think Bob said everything very well. Everything is, we agree that the event can go forward at this point. What we are unhappy about is the Jersey barriers, or the concrete barriers. As stated, Mr. Scouso had them down his competition area and against the return lane. That's an NHRA standard. He was a sanctioned event, that's why he had them. This event is not. The spectators are protected by concrete barriers where appropriate for Scramble. On the quarter-mile race, they're not even permitted to be on the side of the drag strip. They have to be behind the start line. So as far as we're concerned, the spectators are protected.
You have signed off on the safety plan.
Yeah, there was no place for me to sign, but yes.
Okay.
It's a go at this point for us. We were all out there yesterday for site inspection. At the end, it was an agreement that everything was in place.
Okay.
Except, as I say, the concrete barriers, but there's no rule, no regulation, there's nothing out there that says you have to have concrete barriers.
I, too, have researched it online, and I've seen many a race go off without the barriers down the side, so.
NHRA?
Yes.
Yes, they require it, but as I said, it's not an NHRA sanctioned event, so.
So you had sent us a list of concerns right after the approval. Was, had you, you know, I don't have it right in front of me, but had that been brought up about the barriers?
On his original plan, he did not have barriers on both sides, so.
I know, but I just wondered if you had brought that up before, because you did send us some...
Yes, Mr. Baxter, myself, had had conversations about the concrete barriers.
I'm talking, you had sent us an email with a list.
Right.
Had you included that in the list? I don't have it in front of me at this point.
I don't remember it, the council member, I'm sorry. But it is concern, is a concern, for sure, but as I say, not a requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Happy birthday.
Thank you for...
Thank you, work.
Good morning, Craig.
Good morning. So as both the chief and Mr. Kozakewicz, the town attorney, have said, we've looked at this, we understand about the concerns of the barriers, researched the state code, as well as the other codes that are referenced by it, and nothing speaks to having, to have barriers down both sides of the runway, just speaks to providing vehicle impact protection for the spectators, not to the rest. I believe in his original application, Mr. Baxter stated that this was not an NHRA sanctioned event, and the only place that I've actually been able to find it is for NHRA sanctioned events. So, but otherwise, you know, his safety plan is all in order, I was out there yesterday, I'll be out there again today, and then also tomorrow, just to see how things are progressing, and that everything is coming together.
So you're saying that Mr. Baxter has adhered to all of your requests?
Yes, I believe so. We've had numerous discussions, he's updated his original safety plan, made some changes that we requested, and we discussed, he's presented that, and as of yesterday, we received an updated site plan, because he had made some changes to site plan, to his site plan layout, but that's not uncommon, Mr. Scousell did the same thing at the last minute, changing things around. So as long as everything was in place, and safety measures and, and all, you know, we'll work with him in the field to make his event happen.
And certainly, the neighborhood across the street did reach out, I'm sure to others, that the loudspeaker was an issue at times, so just something to keep in mind, there are neighborhoods right across the street from the property, and many of them spoke up about the loudspeaker.
I didn't get any of those complaints, I'm sure PD or the town board received them.
I believe we received about three complaints, three or four, that were sent to the board, correct?
Yeah, just the guy who spoke Tuesday is the one.
It wasn't many, it was about three or four.
I think that was after the fact, I don't think the chief had to respond to anything, did he?
No.
So it was just comments afterwards?
One, there was one.
One response?
Well, I would think the loudspeaker is an issue that's not challenging to address.
Thanks, Craig.
And, and.
Thank you, Craig.
Chief, what happens if we do get a tremendous amount of, because you're having two runways, so you have a two, two-speaker system, so you're doubling from one event, what happens under those conditions?
I thought it was only one.
No, it's one, no, two races at the same time.
One runway, but it's starting in the middle.
So you're going to have to have two, two audio systems in place.
So a quarter mile's going northbound on the 10,000-foot runway, and the eighth of a mile's going southbound on the 10,000-foot runway. During Mr. Scousell's event, we had no town code violations as far as noise goes, so we were out there with a monitor, and nothing exceeded the limit to give someone a violation. And that would be addressed, if there is a violation during this event, that would be addressed at that time? We'd be the same thing. Chief, was there ever a maximum speed limit or anything, or Mr. Baxter's like, what, have we ever determined what's the fastest speed permitted, or? Yeah, maybe we could talk to Mr. Baxter about that, but we, we have had that discussion, and I know 175 was stipulated, but I think Mr. Baxter said, there's no one going over 150? Right.
Oh, it's 150, because I know we received a safety plan this morning, and it said 165, so we're down to 150? Mr. Baxter, can you come forward, please?
Drivers who are going to be exceeding a certain speed, which is the 165 mark that you mentioned, will have to have roll bars installed in their cars, and have to have a fireproof suit, and have to have a fireproof glove, and a five-point harness for extra safety measures, that's the 165 mile per hour mark, or threshold that you mentioned. The speed limit that we have in the CDA is 175 miles per hour, I can tell you that in a quarter-mile race, it's nearly impossible for a car, for a street car, to reach that speed, I don't think we'll have any cars hit over 140 miles per hour.
So there's no speed limit under 140?
What do you mean?
Under quarter mile?
Well.
165's under quarter mile, and.
Well, that's for the entire event, 165, if you're going to exceed that, you need to have the additional safety equipment.
Got that.
175 miles per hour is our speed limit, as stipulated in the CDA, and that's what I discussed with the town attorney, and that's what we settled on, and what I was saying is, the type of cars that we have here, they cannot reach those speeds in a quarter mile. So though, that speed limit was really put in place for the half-mile race that we were doing, and we're no longer doing that, so the cars aren't going to get anywhere near those speeds.
In the last race, there was a 115 mile an hour speed limit on the eighth of a mile, so you don't have one, you don't have a speed limit on the eighth of a mile?
No, on the eighth of a mile, no.
I don't think when I was there, anybody even got over 100.
No, there were people that were disqualified.
Really?
But they wanted to race, and they want to show that they went that speed.
Not while I was there, that's interesting, though.
Yeah.
Mr. Baxter, did you have the opportunity to attend the prior event?
I did, and I met with Mr. Scousell several times before the event and after.
Good, okay. Because I know this is your first event, so I think any information you can receive from anybody in the field would be helpful, so I'm glad you attended.
I just, I, I'm curious about just, so on the eighth mile, can we set a maximum speed limit?
We can certainly.
Let's go, like, oh, so you're saying 175 is for anywhere at any time, right? That's, that's what the CDA said, 175?
Correct.
But, but I know that no one, I don't think there's a car that certainly can do that in an eighth of a mile, but I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get.
Certainly not yours, because that's what you want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah!
So I'm just trying to get a general idea, so this, so it's, you're saying 165, or let's say 164 is permitted in a regular street vehicle, but if you hit 165, you've got to have additional safety, roll bar, roll cage, seatbelt system, and so forth.
Correct.
That's, just to get that extra 10 miles an hour to go, but you're still going to stop at 175, do I got it right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other questions? No, that's it?
I do think that Mr. Egan probably should have raised our IT guy, Chip.
I'm sure he's got it, right?
Who was dusting it?
Lieutenant Egan?
Oh, yeah.
The lieutenant's one.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, yeah, that's one, too, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good day. All right, so what are we moving on? We're moving on to discussion number two, police department, matters surrounding monthly crime report. Chief, you're back up? Up, where is he?
I'm out of here.
This is birthday, has to come in, huh?
I'm back, I didn't go far.
Okay.
Don't say that, we're going to thank you.
Better than me singing, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Wooten would have said.
Yeah, where is he? Let him get him in here. Okay, everyone has the August report, sorry we're late with this, Billy Joe had it done in time, it just didn't get over here until later on, so, but we're in good shape, everything looks in order, we're rebounding nicely from our 2020 numbers, not too far off from the mark of 2019, so if we look at 2019, I tried to eliminate 2020, we're pretty much on course, we are a little higher crime-wise, but again, it's the identity theft that seems to be causing that, so.
And that's across the Suffolk County.
Across the nation.
Yeah, yeah, across the nation, that we've been seeing that, and.
If anyone's having a problem with that, the FBI has some tips up on their website that they can go to, or actually, I saw the New York State AG Attorney General has some tips, and also, if you're a victim of it, they have like a kid or a guide to get you through, or get you out of it, so.
Chief, can you put that on, on the police department website? I think it's a good idea, especially since we're seeing a bit of a spike on that, that might help.
Right.
How's the harvest season traffic going?
It started two weekends ago, last weekend was a busy weekend because of the maritime festival in Southold, that's always the way it is, our next peak weekend will probably be Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, I saw in front of Harbs that they had the cones out for the little lane, that seemed to be working pretty well.
I think this is our third year doing that, and that seems to help, for sure, yeah.
That definitely, adding that extra turning lane there has been very helpful. One thing I noticed was that there was a sign, when you came up, when you were coming, going east, when you got by Brimer, there was a sign, having traffic go over the other way, saying that it was busy ahead, but you're trying to divide up the traffic, what was...
Going southbound, they wanted to send people?
On 105.
Yes.
On 105.
It was saying, traffic ahead, take.
Main road.
Yeah.
Take the detour, yep.
So is that, and wasn't, there wasn't actually traffic yet?
Right.
So is that just that you're trying to divide up the traffic, so it's on two different?
Correct, usually, the, your GPS, your Waze app will do that for you, so, I mean, they even do that on, on Sound Shore Road there.
I know, I've seen.
Even that little stretch, they'll send you up Sound Shore, or try to, I mean, we barricaded off now, but they try to send you up there just to get the extra minute or two off of.
Chief, I've had, I've had vineyard goers on my dirt road in the middle of my sod field, because they, the Waze took them that way.
The same thing, the same, same thing with the.
What are you doing here? I'm looking for the vineyard.
Right, with the fault event, that's what happened, too, they were sending them through farm roads.
Yeah.
Right, I saw a limo up near Sound Shore Road, cutting through a farm field.
Yeah.
So I had a couple of questions on the police report.
Sure.
In June and July, the alarm fees were down by a lot, you know, probably around by a thousand.
Yeah, that has to do.
What was up with that?
That's just with the billing cycle, so it's, it's when Gina gets the bills out and stuff like that.
So that didn't actually drop off, it's just the way the billing is done?
Right, I think we should probably look at the annual number for that.
All right, chief, I have a question here, I see the summonses are up, are you doing some type of?
Summonses are, I think, a little down, actually.
Oh, excuse me, they're down?
Right, and I think that has to do probably with, we were low on part-timers and low on seasonal employees this year, so I think that's what that reflects.
But speeding incidents are down on Sound Avenue during the month of October, right?
Probably because of traffic, way, way down.
That was a good one, Ken.
No one goes over 20 miles an hour.
Actually, they're down to a standstill sometimes.
That's what happens when you have pumpkin luck.
Yep.
One other question, one other thing I wanted to bring up, the noncriminal are not by sector, so, I mean, I would like to see the noncriminal by sector as well, for the next report.
Which one? I don't think we list anything by sector, except for arrests.
Right, but a lot of the, you know, because some of them have increased, and I just would like to know if they've increased all across the town, or only in certain sectors.
Okay, I'll see what I can do with that.
Thank you.
That's, that's a large spreadsheet, just so that you know that.
Yeah, there is a spreadsheet on that, and that is documented through the stats, so when.
No, there's not, he's, you're saying it would be a large sheet.
Catherine, just hold on, chief, what you can do is, when you compile stats, maybe just send it to everybody according to sector?
Sure.
That way, we can.
I mean, you're looking at this sheet here, and then you want to break that down by sector, it's going to be a.
A monumental task, and I know what you're asking, so, as, as a person who knows stats, we can somehow try to come up with it, but we're going to move on to the.
We'll have to look at it.
Well, my point is, when there's, you know, there's an increase, I want to know if it's in a certain sector.
Right.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Or certain sectors, thank you.
It'll be 601 or 605.
Yeah, we all know the sectors, 601, 605, you're right.
It's not going to be the other three, so.
Yeah, and that's been going on for many years, it just didn't happen overnight, you know, that these sectors go up and down, so.
601, 605 are our busiest sectors.
Yeah.
And one thing I would like to ask about the downtown sectors, I know that sometimes when there's an issue where there's a shortage in some sectors, I have been told that it's pulled from the downtown sector.
Sometimes the foot patrol has to take a patrol car, yes, that happens.
Just my concern in the downtown area is that you've got more people down there now with the apartments and such, and I know that there have been some issues there, so that just concerns me that, you know, with the increased density in the downtown area.
They're not our first stop on filling sectors, patrol sectors that are empty, so we also have COB that actually backfills the sectors, too, so, it would be an extreme case that someone's pulled from Main Street.
I know there were some issues, are there some concerns with the apartments and the crime in the downtown area?
We've had issues with different apartments, and I think it has to come down with their selection process, I think that they've been told this, they have to tighten up on that. So far, I think the new one has been pretty good, I mean, it brings in extra calls, you still have domestics and.
You're talking about the Riverview lofts?
Yeah, I'm a termite, right, but I don't think it's as high as others have got, so.
Just concerned about the downtown area, now with all the residential, and then there was the, you know, the thing that happened at Barth's.
Right.
Which was pretty concerning.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Don't walk around at 2:00 in the morning intoxicated with your life savings in your pocket, and you won't get robbed.
It's called a crime of opportunity, we know that from law enforcement.
100%.
You take away the opportunity if you can.
Yeah.
This wasn't at Barth's.
But people always have that ability and desire.
I was referring to something that happened in Barth's.
No, I know, I know what you're referring to.
Yeah.
That's a result of drugs.
Thank you, chief.
These are all common, criminal justice, policing, and the shifting of personnel happens, and.
But, and arrest was immediate, I mean, too.
Twice.
Right.
For two of the robberies.
No, we're very good with.
We're very good at solving.
Our apprehension rate on this is very good, so.
Good job. Happy birthday again, chief.
Happy birthday, chief.
Thank you.
We won't keep you up here.
Devin's going to lead us in song now, come on, Devin.
Birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear chief, happy birthday to you.
How old are you?
Old. See, chief, that's what you get for saying you didn't like the first time around, you got a second time, take care, have a good day, have a good weekend, wherever you're doing. Thank you, chief, and for our next discussion, I'm going to ask the planning board, Greg Bergmanter, please come forward for discussions surrounding the special permit, application for the Riverhead Charter School, Northville Schoolhouse, Greg, is he still with us?
Yep.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
Well, you snuck in.
Yeah, would you like Kim to come up and join?
Be a little.
Yeah, she, I'll let Kim introduce her team and who she's got here to represent the application.
Good morning, Kim. Either one, you can sit down.
You can go here, I can move down, too.
How are you?
I just wanted to thank you for having us, introduce some people over here, Amy Lamontico.
Hi, Amy. Hi, Amy, I didn't recognize you.
Good to see you.
Now I see you, okay.
She's the president of the charter school board of trustees, but her day job, and maybe some of you recognize her, she's a registered nurse and a director of employee health services at the Conne Bay Medical Center. We have Ray Ankrum, who is the principal of the charter school, and a previous nominee for life changer of the year award, which is a national program that recognizes educators across the country. Al Kuzinski, he's from Boulder Engineering, he's the, he's an engineer, Tina Masadi, CS? Tina Masadi, CS, from, I'm sorry, what is it? Masidi, CS, okay, from Mamasie Architects. Thank you for having us. This, this is a, hopefully a culmination of a two-year odyssey that the Charter School has had trying to look for a location for its expanded student base. I think you would be surprised to know that schools are only allowed in nine of your thirty-seven zoning districts. In other municipalities such as Southampton and Southold, schools are permitted in all zoning districts. There were plenty locations that the Charter School has discovered in the past two years that were paved, sewered, watered, but they were not in the appropriate zoning district. They were acceptable locations to the Charter School, but because they weren't permitted or allowed by special permit, that they couldn't use those locations without seeking use variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which, as this board probably knows, is very difficult to obtain. In any event, Ms. Lamontico was driving down Sound Avenue one day and she called me and she said, "Is the Northville Schoolhouse permitted?" And I pulled out my map and I said it's an agricultural protection zone, which is allowed by special permit use. She contacted the landlord, luckily he was in between commercial tenants, and it turns out that it is a, we believe, a perfect location for this school. You'll, you'll probably recognize that there was a, a Riverhead News Review article, I think it was earlier this year, that recognized the Charter School, their state assessment exams were off the charts, sixty-eight percent of their students scored proficient in ELA where the statewide average was forty-five, and math, sixty-two percent of their students scored proficient where the statewide average was forty-seven. So the, this site does present with some challenges, but like I said, we're limited by the zoning districts that we can be in. We're hoping that the town board during your update of your comprehensive plan, that you take a look at other areas where schools can be permitted, instead of just nine zoning districts, maybe you can expand that to a number of other areas. And we have suggestions, we've talked to Greg, he's been very accommodating, he always picks up the phone, he always calls us back, he had some great suggestions for this application, so I'll let him go through his report.
Just wanted to, just real quick to that, I do find that interesting that it's only nine out of thirty-seven now. Southampton and Southold, it's in all?
All, and I don't know about Brookhaven, but I do know Southold and Southampton, schools are permitted in all zoning districts.
Greg, do you know why that was that way? I mean, we can certainly look into it, I just didn't know if you knew offhand.
There is a difference. I know Jeff had worked on this, Jeff's made a, had a lot of phone calls on this. There's a difference between a, like a, you know, private school or a charter school versus a school that's under the State Department of Education. I don't know too much, so I don't want to go beyond my knowledge.
I didn't know if you had that information.
There are, you know, most of our zoning districts don't allow schools, as Kim said, there's a few that allow it by special permit. APZ is one of them.
You can come up to the mic, Amy.
Because Amy Lamontico.
Yes.
Just to that comment, a charter school is a public school, I just want to make sure that that's known. It's a public school of choice, it's not a private school, and when you look at some of the zoning districts, vocational schools are allowed in district, in areas that traditional schools are not, so it was just kind of a little bit unclear to us why, to your point, that precedent was there, and I can say, Mr. Ankrum and I and our real estate agent, it's greater than three years that we've been looking for a site, all the way back to putting in a bid to purchase the Mercy site, looking at various lands, you know, it's been a long haul, so.
So I think that if you can make a note and make sure that Jeff understands that we need to address the schools' classifications throughout the town.
I wonder if it was just a function of protecting the agricultural lands out here in the past. I'm just speculating, I don't know if that's what it is or not, but I'm sure when Jeff gets back, he could probably address that better, yep.
And the good news about this site is that it used to be a school many, I have, and maybe later, if you're interested, I have a nineteen fifty nine to nineteen sixty-six town zoning map and it shows it as a school, so.
Yeah, I, I actually, I did speak with Richard Weins, the chairman of the Landmarks Preservation. He said his mother went to school here, so I mean, we're talking in the thirties and forties, it was a school. So it really would be nice to kind of, for everything to come full circle. So, you know, the site specifically, it's on the south side of Sound Avenue, approximately sixteen hundred feet east of the intersection of Sound and Phillips. The building is an existing two-story building, I just took some pictures of a site visit. There's an existing gravel parking lot, there's two, it's served by two curb cuts on Sound Avenue. The site's plan, site plan's proposing one to be an entrance and an exit. You know, there's existing gravel parking, they are proposing to add handicap accessible parking and a handicap accessible ramp on the south side of the building. They do propose a future land banked parking area. Right now, they're demonstrating that they have space for twenty-four parking stalls, which meets the required town code. One thing's not clear, if this is an elementary school or for high school level kids, high school?
It'll be high school.
Now, will, will the students have their own vehicles or are they...
No.
So that was one of the concerns that I raised of, you know, just the amount of parking, if the students are going to be driving themselves.
So they don't only need it for school buses then?
School buses and staff and...
And staff, right, okay, good.
In the event, like I said, the town code does allow them to provide land banked parking. They would need to just file legal instruments in the event that the town board would require them to expand that area. They show that they can add twelve parking stalls on the eastern side of the building. Couple of minor things I just recommended, you know, right now it's just a gravel parking lot, the plan shows pavement, pavement striping and arrows. Obviously, you're not going to be able to stripe a gravel driveway, so I just recommended just delineating the parking with railroad tires or concrete curb stops, something very simple. They will need Suffolk County Department Health Services, they will need a, to install a new sanitary system. I could not find anything in the building department records of when that septic system was last upgraded, so they need to go to the health department. One, just...
The landlord is going to be applying for a new innovative alternative treatment system for the property, and I think Mr. Kazinsky is going to be making that application.
So one of, one of the questions I just had, you know, the only real concern with this site is, you know, traffic congestion on Sound Avenue, the number of buses, types of buses, I would like the applicant to just clarify that. One thing the town board might want to consider, right now Sound Avenue is one lane in each direction. Whether it would be appropriate to add like a deceleration lane to get the buses off of Sound Avenue so that they could safely turn into the site, you know, just something for the board to weigh in on, consider.
I know at your regular building, you have traffic officers there at dismissal time.
Right, so our regular building has currently over seven hundred students. This building will have a maximum one hundred and sixty kids, and so we're looking at about four to six buses, four to six large buses or ten small buses, so that would be the amount of buses that, that would, that would suffice bringing in the students from the house.
And obviously, you'll, you'll need someone out there directing traffic, which happens in Calverton.
Correct. One of the other concerns is just the traffic circulation of the buses. I think Alec can provide just a queuing plan to demonstrate that they can queue the number of buses that they need on-site so that you're not creating congestion on Sound Avenue. And another thing would be consideration for when the buses leave the site, it may be difficult, I mean, they're not going to be, you know, having school on the weekends to compete with the harvest season, but making a left onto Sound Avenue, depending on the time, may be problematic, so the town board might wish to consider having buses exit to the site and make a right only. That would allow them to go down to Sound and down to Church Lane to get back to Main Road rather than trying to make a left across Sound Avenue.
I just have a question, I don't think it applies to the site plan, but where do you think that the enrollment is going to come from? Do you think it's going to be more locally or, or is it going to be from the East End?
Our, it's organic, and so we, it's through our system, like we talked before to Riverhead Central School District about not poaching kids and not taking kids from like high school or whatever, because we don't want to interrupt their growth patterns or whatever, so we are organic kid at eight, and so as our students get older, they'll come to our high school. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, your area, it takes in the, it's regional.
Yeah.
What I can tell.
Yeah, it is, it is. The heaviest districts are Riverhead, Longwood, and Floyd, William Floyd.
Just one question, it's not about the site plan, but how many staff members will you be adding? Because, I mean, it does bring jobs for...
It does.
I was a former teacher, so it brings jobs for teachers. Do you have an idea of number of staff that will be added?
So we're thinking year to year, additional eight teachers, yeah. And our teachers are a part of your former union, just so you know.
Greg, just going back to, just clarify for me again, it's a gravel parking lot, but how are you striping arrows and spaces?
Mr. Bergen made a good suggestion about the concrete blocks. If you look across the street of Pindar, it's all gravel. A lot of our wineries and breweries in the APZ have a gravel parking lot, and I like his idea about the concrete stoppers that you put.
And we'll add additional signage, showing one-way signs coming in and out of the site. Obviously, the ADA signs are going to be there, but as far as the two-way circulation, we'll just include some additional signage.
That just says proposed directional arrows and so forth, I'm wondering how you're going to do that on the gravel parking lot.
Yeah, we're going to have to, you know, that would be in the original intent, if we do mark them out over time, they're just going to fade away, so to Greg's point, we're just going to add signage to mitigate the area.
I will say, I'm overly impressed, clearly there's been a lot of work already done on that building. I'm a fan of paler vineyards, and when I pull out and you see that building, it's beautiful, and so I think it's great, the building itself and everything, and to utilize it now. I always said that, looks like a pretty incredible schoolhouse and so forth, so it actually would get back in, be pretty cool.
I do, I do have to say I'm excited to see one of the old schools used, because I've been long, around long enough. I went to the Beating Hollow school, which was three rooms. Wow. But this is more class, Beating Hollow was on some...
What was the other?
I'm not giving that up, Ken.
So our current middle school is the sister school to this building?
Right, you were, that was the Calverton school, yeah. And my sister went there.
Just a couple other recommendations, the site plan doesn't show any site lighting. When I visited the site, I only saw one kind of like entry light above the doorway and there was one floodlight in the back, so being that it's going to be used year-round, they might want to just add some parking lot lighting. One question I did have was, it doesn't really appear to show any like outdoor recreation areas. I'm not sure if that's required under any kind of school education law, but, you know, an outdoor recreation area should be shown. I mean, I do note that there is an existing single-family residence on the south of the property, so I don't know if there's going to be any kind of delineation for this, you know, any proposed outdoor areas, but that's something that the applicant can clarify if it's needed. We did get comments from the building department just regarding building code analysis. And we will refer the plans to the highway. They are proposing asphalt aprons on Sound Avenue. That was added at staff's recommendation just to prevent, you know, gravel from trailing out of Sound Avenue. But aside from just, you know, addressing a couple of the minor issues in this report, I mean, it seems like it's a, certainly an appropriate location for the type of school they're proposing, as long as they can address some of the issues that we've raised.
If you don't have outdoor areas, what do you do for sports fields? Do you use the school district's sports field?
No, we wish that the collaboration between the school district and the charter school was as robust as it is.
But what do you do about gym classes?
They need you to get up to the mic, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. There are areas that are surrounding the, the location that we can use for outdoor space in terms of converting that.
There's space between the schoolhouse and the residential home, actually a large amount of outdoor space that would be appropriate for recreational, yes.
Yeah, the building provides five thousand square feet, that probably is four acres.
Yeah, yeah, it is a nice parcel, yeah.
And there will be a gym?
No. No gym.
Just classroom.
Just classroom and outdoor space to utilize. Initially, when I, when I first got here in two thousand and twelve, we didn't have a, we didn't have a gym in the old Calverton schoolhouse, we did athletics outside for like the first four years. Yeah, we do have music, we have art.
Does the board have any other questions?
Is that everything with the site plan?
I think you guys did a very good job. I think it's an exciting project.
Makes perfect sense to me to have a place to filter your, your existing students too, yeah.
And it's a sign of growth, positive growth, good planning, that now you can look and expand, and I look forward to seeing the completed school.
So how many kids could be in this school? What would be the total population, maxing out children?
One hundred and sixty.
One sixty or one oh six?
Well, our, our plan shows one oh six.
One oh six.
The principal's dyslexic.
Uh-oh.
Many people are, even if he was.
That was a very interesting remark.
So we'll have the applicant just amend the plans to address the issues that are raised. I guess we'll come back, you know, present the plans, and if the board's amenable, we can schedule a public hearing.
Is it, I don't mean to cut you off, Greg, is it possible we could schedule the public hearing now and we'll get you the plans by, prior to the public hearing?
There isn't that much of adjustments, they're not major.
Right, we have to get you lighting, we have to get you a bus circulation plan.
How long does it take to get a bus circulation plan?
One to two weeks.
Okay, and then if you don't get it and we schedule the public hearing...
He'll get it.
I'll get it for you.
And a lighting plan, I don't know if...
Yeah, we'll have it. We can pull this together quickly enough.
I mean, the next, we do, September is a long month, so we do, the next town board meeting is not until, I believe, October fifth, so I mean, they do have about a week and a half to get it. I'll leave it to the board's discretion if they get the plan.
Well, I mean, I don't see the rush anyway, you're not going to start until next year, right? The school year's already started.
We, we can't get other subsequent approvals and applications.
We need state applications and approvals.
Because our next step after this board is planning board, you still have to go for site plan approval.
I'm fine with it.
I still have to go with site to the state also, because it's a new school, and that, that could take quite a while, but I have no problem, and if it doesn't happen, um...
We'll get the information in, in time for, for the, in a week or two, if they say they can get the...
We get it by the, by the next week.
Okay, Greg, when you work with them and, and figure out, if it doesn't work, make sure it's the following.
Absolutely.
Town board meeting, perfect.
Yes, and thank you to your staff for, because...
Oh, they're gracious.
One hundred and sixty, the board for having us.
Yes, good to see you again.
Okay, thank you.
You take care.
Thank you.
Just sort of grow into that.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good luck.
Bye, good luck, everybody.
Please come visit, reach out, we'd love to have you speaking here.
I can't think of a better use of the space.
Okay, thank you, Greg, and you're going to stay for the next discussion. The next discussion item concerns the matter surrounding the Suffolk Theater, and Greg, I believe you're going to take the lead on that?
I will present the application.
Dawn Thomas, our CTA director is going to join us, Greg. Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning.
So we have a site plan application discussion for a fifty-nine foot tall mixed-use building consisting of residential apartments on the upper floors, retail with unidentified tenants on the ground floor, as well as an expanded backstage area for the Suffolk Theater, which will include a new green room, dressing rooms, kitchenette, laundry, et cetera. This is approximately three thousand square feet, the first floor retail and twenty-eight apartments on the upper floors, twenty studio apartments, eight one-bedroom apartments. It is a type-one action, so it will require coordinated secret review. I did speak with Rick, there are some minor inconsistencies with the full EIF, he'll just address those and we can send them out, initiate the coordination. Again, nothing significant on that, I just want to make sure everything's in order. So now, an important part of this project is that there was an easement, which a portion of the plaza area and parking stalls will be located in. That easement is located to the north of the theater's property. That was granted to the property owner on or about December seventh of two thousand and six, and that easement was granted and it was given to support the intended uses as described, which consisted of expanding the performing arts center and commercial and residential uses. So the one, one of the significant issues with the plans right now is the parking sheet. CS one oh one on the site plan identifies a total of ten parking stalls that will be installed and located around the perimeter of the plaza area, including two handicap accessible stalls. But the sheet appears to be based on the prior configuration of the first street parking lot, so I would just recommend that that plan be amended to reflect the current configuration of the parking lot. And consistent with the fire marshal's comments, that plan needs to show clear emergency vehicle access from public right-ofways to ensure that emergency vehicles can get to the rear of the theater. There is a little, some issue that I'm a little confused on, that sheet, CS one oh one, states that twenty-eight parking stalls will be lost in the parking lot, while fourteen spaces are gained. Again, the plans only show twelve parking stalls, so I'm not, it's not really abundantly clear where parking is being lost and where the number is being gained, so that just needs to be tightened up by the applicant a little bit. I mean, this is unique in terms of, you know, being it, it's going to impact the first street parking lot. We've never had an application that's actually going to result in a loss of parking stalls. And our town's parking study, the two thousand and twenty parking study, did identify that this first street parking lot is the most heavily utilized parking lot in the downtown area due to its centralized location. Utilities throughout the parking lot will be relocated to facilitate the installation of the building. It's unclear if the pole-mounted lighting will be relocated, so it just needs to be tightened up. The rooftop does show a proposed future solar panels to help offset the electrical demand produced by the theater, commercial and residential uses. They did provide a lighting plan, we just need some clarification as to the mounting heights of the fixtures. The plans do show some recessed lighting on the balconies of the fixtures. The plans do show some recessed lighting on the balconies of the fixtures, as well as accent lighting. We'll need, the applicant will need to identify the heights of those in order to determine whether a variance is needed. They are proposing connections to the sewer and water district. There are existing water line and sewer lines located to the north of the property within that town parking lot. They are proposing trash collection to be maintained within the building, on the western side of the building. I did refer the plans to the fire marshal, the applicant has worked back and forth to determine required fire lanes. This is something that had come up in other plans, where they kind of get far down the road, and then they hit the fire, snagged the fire marshal, where they need to provide emergency access. So the, the fire marshal did review the plans, and did see that the proposed fire lanes are acceptable. We got some comments from the town engineer, and they'll need health department approval. That's the basic, you know, outline of the application. The applicant is here, he does have renderings of it, is there any questions for the board?
Can we see a rendering?
We've already been to the architectural review board.
Okay.
And historic landmarks.
Perfect.
So the renderings that we have, which we have some here for the press. The one thing about what Rick did.
Can I see the physical rendering?
Excuse me, yes, right, Rick did emboss, you'll see they're kind of different than, right, right.
We should know that, right?
Excuse me, Mike?
I said, you should know about the mics.
Where are the, where's the mic?
Yeah, we need to get them up here.
Oh, yeah, so. What we have achieved here is to, to, which I believe as a town resident, more reflects the flavor that we had on downtown Riverhead, unlike some of the new buildings that were put up. So Rick did a fantastic job, Bob's approved it.
Tim, we'll give you, we'll give you ours.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get, we bought copies for the, for the press, okay?
I'll get it, sit over in a minute.
I can give you electronic copies.
Right, we'll send you electronic copies.
Okay.
So we've, we've been working with the ARB and historical landmarks, and I think Catherine was at a couple of those meetings. So we have, we have incorporated a lot of their suggestions, we haven't had final approval yet. The purpose of today's meeting is to review where we are during the site plan process, and we're requesting that a resolution be drafted for the next town board meeting to start the secret clock, so we can pass this around for secret to take the next step in the process. So we, we certainly are going to take all the issues that were raised by Greg, you know, the, mostly technical issues, and we'll have them corrected, but in the, in the meantime, we want to start the clock and get the process underway. And then after that, we have to review one more time, and then we have the resolution to have a public hearing on the actual site plan application. So that's where we are today. And again, the, just for the public to understand, the mixed use is to guarantee revenue for the future operation of the theater. So that the, the performing arts part of this business is an up and down business, okay? It's subject to weather, pandemics, you name it. He's been closed, he, we just opened up again, we've been closed during the pandemic. So we need, we need. Right, right, so we, we, right, August 27th, we open up. So in order to ensure the revenue stream for the project to continue in perpetuity, even with new owners in the future, the, the revenue part of this, the mixed use, the income from the residential, and these are going to be market apartments, this is no subsidized apartments whatsoever, these are market apartments. There's plenty of people in the field that have already inquired in the entertainment field that would love to have these apartments, okay? And the retail spaces are very small, there probably be more of a dried business, you know, offices on, on the lower floor there. The easements, we conform with the legal description of the easement. The parking will be reflected, just for the public to know in the town board, of course, you did a great job. You authorized the reconstruction of the parking lot, Marty did a great job, so we picked up an extra sixty-plus spaces back there. I don't think there'll be any impact here, we are in the parking district, so we are, we pay park, parking district tax. The other thing is that the Suffolk Theater is taxpayer. So even though we have a slight reduction right now that we got approved for, we do pay property taxes, all the abhorrent taxes, garbage taxes, this tax, that tax, we pay all the taxes. So this is not a tax-free, that's the thing that I keep hearing around the, the community, we're not tax-free. We actually pay property taxes, we employ a lot of people. We had a show with The Rascals, it was sold out, almost 400 people in the building, so we're back in business. And this is a critical part, we want to expand the backstage, we need to support the green rooms, the storage, the carpentry. So there's, we're really, we took a recommendation from the fire marshal, we went through this process, as Greg knows, and I want to thank Greg and Jeff, they've done a tremendous job cooperating with us. I know they always hear the bad news, but I, I, our planning department's very professional, and we get along with them. And I enjoy working with them actually, and I do business in a lot of other towns, and they're A1, A+. So, so what we, we did, we, we had to swap a couple of things around to accommodate the fire marshal, which Craig has been wonderful on this, so we, so everything, we, we've taken the input, can't wait for the public hearing, so the public can weigh in on this project, and we want to get the ball going down the field, so that's why we're here today.
So you're adding ten parking stalls? What you're saying, did I?
No, there's.
We're losing parking stalls.
Within the, within the easement itself, there are five or six, now I forget which.
I know we were losing.
There are five or six added to the north of the, of the plaza within the easement. The parking stalls that are proposed on the east side are outside the easement area, so it's something we need to work with the town on. When Marty proposed the plan a couple of years ago, I went back and forth with him, and, and we both agreed that what we, what I was proposing for the artist parking within the easement, and I also had a, a bus parking area on the west side, which the fire marshal didn't like, and we took out. But the parking spaces that I'm proposing to the east side of the property, of the easement, that include the handicap parking is on town property. So that, that makes up the other six that were proposed. And when the fire marshal asked that we move the, the fire lane, or not the fire lane, rather the, the delivery and the lift to get equipment up and down from grade to the stage level area, from the west side to the east side, one of those parking spaces got removed also, so there's five, so six.
So I know you said you, you pay property taxes, yes, all right, will you be seeking IDA benefits?
Yes. The, the, one of the major aspects of IDA benefits is that we would save, save sales tax on construction materials. Even Tanger got that. It's, I don't know if this qualifies for property tax abatements. Some, if it's designated a tourist attraction, it could, but that hasn't been discussed, we haven't really had a discussion about that yet.
Haven't got that far.
Right, we haven't got that far, but I will say that at, on the, at the minimum, we would definitely apply for the sales tax exemption on construction materials that's available. New York State sales tax.
As you know, we, parking district just bonded almost $800,000 to redo that parking lot and improvements to other parking lots. This project is going to cause a loss of parking spaces. And the concern with the parking district is, I'm liaison with them, and that's why I bring this up, is that those lost spaces, would you be willing to voluntarily reimburse the parking district for those lost spaces?
Those, those spaces were lost somewhere around two, 2006, when I bought the property, they were gone.
I'm talking about with your new construction, what's currently out there right now for parking spaces, will going to be less spaces when this project is done.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think that's correct, because the spaces that were gone in 2006, when I bought the property, were gone, and we're not going outside. And look, if I remember correctly, the way that Marty laid out the parking flow chart, there's, the property goes parallel with the north side of the church, which is going to be the main entrance back and forth, that's the main door. There's no pocket there, you know, that we are impeding on, on access in any way, shape, or form to, to the building. So I, I know everybody's talking about spaces gained and lost. I, I don't see as if we are taking any spaces, the spaces were gone fourteen, fifteen years ago.
If you do account of what's there right now, and you do account after your project is completed, there will be less parking spaces.
There may be on the east side.
North side.
On the north side. But doesn't Marty's the street, what was once First Street, become First Street again, if I remember correctly.
Some of those parking spaces that are, are being considered as lost, are lost anyway because of Marty's changes.
That's right.
Now Marty did gain back a number of spaces, and he did a great job on the total parking lot. But reconfiguring the traffic for the parking takes away some of those parking spaces that are being said that we were taking away, and that's not really correct.
The, the north side.
There is a, an impact on, because of what we're doing, but considering the entire back parking lot and the changes that were made, the spaces that are being lost to the change are more than the ones that we're responsible for.
So we're going, Greg asked us to address that very issue specifically, because it's a little foggy right now, we will, and we'll get an exact number for you, Tim. I just want to remind everybody, we pay parking district taxes, there's no abatement on, on utility taxes in anywhere in the state of New York. So whatever, that 880,000, based on our assessed valuation, we pay for that bond too, as every other property tax, property owner in the district pays for.
Understood, but they didn't pay to have parking spaces removed, they paid to have parking spaces added.
And, and which, they did, which, which they did.
They're going to lose parking spaces, and they should be reimbursed.
With all due respect, the, the, the north side of the church, where their property ends on the north side, and where our property ends on the north side, that was once, a long time ago, First Street. And when I spoke with Marty, the whole idea was to keep First Street, First Street, which, whatever parking space had existed, was reconfigured to become the main thoroughfare between East and Roanoke. And the other reason to do that was, you have electrical access, you have the water, you have the sewer there. The last thing you want to do is put parking spots there, and have a guy park his F-150 on top of a sewer manhole cover, or an electrical access point for a water valve, which they're doing now. And the guy's sitting in a bar someplace, and you got a problem, and they can't find it. So by opening that up, you lost the parking spaces, but you have to provide roadway and, and alleyways to get to the existing parking spaces. So yes, you lost it, you didn't lose it because of what, what, what I'm doing. I think you lost it because they brought First Street back to be the access and the main thoroughfare between Roanoke and East Street. And to be able to gain access north of that, where all their parking was, where Marty did a great job by eliminating islands and, and wasted roadways, which we were plenty of, and provided 68 more parking spots. So the reality is, you didn't. Whatever you lost was lost 15 years ago, and because it just works that First Street is now the main thoroughfare.
So where.
You know, you didn't lose because of what, I don't see what you lost because of what we're doing.
What we need to establish, and like I, I said kind of at the offset, is this plan needs to show the current parking configuration, needs to show the proposed addition, where the parking is, and it needs to demonstrate, you know, I, I can, from this plan, I can't say whether or not they're going to need to eliminate stalls to provide, you know, emergency access and, you know, thorough, you know, adequate driveways and thoroughfare. So the plan right now needs to, it needs to be updated to reflect what's currently there. If there's any stalls lost, those need to be clearly identified, because based, right now, looking at the plan, you know, I'm looking at a plan that says 28 spaces lost, 14 gained, net loss 14. That's the data, those are the facts that I'm operating under, so, I mean, if, if the facts are different, if the plan.
And that was done prior to the reconfiguration.
That, that plan was.
We need, we need to.
It needs to be updated to show what's there.
We can take this, we can take the plan and extend it out to show and tie into Marty's drawing, which is what, what Rick did with Marty to, to work around that. So we can show the, 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 the area of the parking lot, not the entire, but the main thoroughfare and some indicated parking spaces, and then after that, you can just look at the, the plan that Marty has.
And I would like to see, I would like to see the configuration, that's what you're talking about, getting to us. Just because I'm thinking also about the people who, you know, you've got the college back there, you've got the law office, the church, and I'm thinking like, where are those people going to park? Because, you know, one of the other apartment buildings, a lot of times you're going really far back, because all those spots up by the apartment are full.
Well, the.
Just thinking about where you're.
In both parking lots, where we have residential development, especially in the, on the riverfront, as you know, we have restricted parking in, you know, for, during the day, for the, for the retailers, the green lines, if I'm understanding.
And I was referring to some of them.
Right, so, and the, like Patcho, the residents have to park away from the, the daily. Now, most of our shows, most of the schedule at the Suffolk Theater is on weekends at night, okay? We very rarely have, maybe once in a blue moon, do we have a convention or something that would be during the day. It's available to be rented during the day, but right now, 98% of our activities are at night. So the parking impacts don't really start gate, on most of the shows. The doors don't open either, sometimes on Sunday it'll open at 6, sometimes at 6:30. So the impact is not if we were loading up the parking lot during the day with regular retail hours. So you have to take that into consideration here. But to me, to answer your question, yes, we have to drill that in, I will, I, I'm pretty sure it's going to be minimal. That's speaking of the race car thing.
And my side was like, what is this?
Bob's starting early now.
I just, I just wanted to.
So we'll, we'll drill that in that, and by the time this process over, we'll have, we'll have it drilled down to everybody understands what's happening here. The easement, which was granted by previous town boards years ago, 15 years ago, took into account, I mean, that was the decision time, because when you grant this easement on public property, and we can use it for ancillary services, that impacted the parking at that time. 15 years later, we here trying to expand the building, and we're not, we're not building on the easement, but we need the easement to accommodate what was specifically when Dawn was the town attorney, and we worked on that easement back then, so.
So I just wanted to bring up two things. The first thing was the expansion of the theater itself, so I don't know, you didn't really get into it too much, but.
Yeah, let me.
I was going to talk about that too. Yeah, I just wanted to, to let the board hear what's happening.
Here's, here's the deal, right now, when, when we built this, that stage was just five feet, just big enough to hang a screen on.
Right.
We actually brought it out to around 11 feet, replicated the whole existing stage exactly the way, and it's still there. Nobody knows this, but it's six feet behind the other one. We copied it exactly, and I don't know if anybody even noticed it. But we've got it, right now, we've got a working stage that's 11 by 32-foot wide, proscenium. We've got a baby grand jammed on one side, and access on the other side is useless, because that's like performance, getting it out. So we've got a 11 by 32-foot stage. We're blowing that stage back either 20 or 22 feet, I don't remember.
Twenty, twenty.
So now we'll have a stage that's 32-foot deep, which will enable what will eventually be a non-for-profit, because I'm no spring chicken, eventually, that's the future. They'll be able to do plays, operas, 36-piece concerts. They'll be able to go more than just four hours. They'll be able to go more than just four hours, they'll be able to bring in, it'll really become a performing arts center, tour guide office, star offices, showers, carpentry shop, storage, a lift to get, I mean, some, right now, we have to, you know, we have to bring in a, an organ, or, or a special piece of equipment. It costs a fortune to get it in there and get it onto the stage. We have to wheel it down, jack it up, put it in, I mean, some of this stuff weighs fifteen hundred pounds. So it just makes it work, and it, it'll do for the town what this theater did fifteen years ago. It'll change it. But this'll change it on steroids. It'll, it'll, it'll really become a place with the versatility, to be able to put seven hundred and twenty-five chairs in there, to, to put tables at ten and twelve, to be able to have cabaret, a dance floor, a full kitchen, two bars. I mean, there is nothing, nothing that I know of on Long Island.
And, and the follow-up-
Or maybe New York State has this.
Follow-up on what Dawn said, it was always the intention, right from the beginning, when the town of Riverhead put this out for bid, that it was phase one and phase two, always, okay? That was actually the deal that Bob signed up for when he bought the theater, it was always right, Dawn, it was always phase one, phase, that's why you brought it up.
I did.
This is now continuing on the promise that Bob and Diane met as owners of the theater to complete the, the process that was started fifteen years ago, to finish up on phase two. The other thing I wanna clarify is, what the plan is, is to create a non-profit operating, a structure to operate the theater, so that if you wanna make a donation to the Suffolk Theater, you get a federal tax write-off, the holder of the property would be the Pike Realty, and they would, would, they would continue to pay property taxes. So, it's not that we're, I don't want a rumor going around, oh, we're gonna be tax-free. It's the non-profit operation, operating entity would be the, whatever it's gonna be called, that, that's, that's the plan for the future. So, 'cause we have people come up all the time and say, gee, I'd like to make a donation, do I get a tax deduction? And you don't, 'cause we're a for-profit.
So, just to jump in, and I'm glad, Dawn, that you brought up that there's so much more to the project, because there is, certainly-
You forget, 'cause you're just in it all the time, so it's like hard.
I forget, 'cause I'm getting old.
Oh, stop. 'Cause I actually did community theater for about twenty years, and in Riverhead, you know, we have the North Fork Theater, which has no rooms downstairs.
Yeah, that's the follow-up.
And I did a play two years ago with the Vale Levitt, and, you know, even when the play's going on, the rest of you are squished up over there on the sides, and that's a beautiful theater. So this is a very cool thing, that you're adding all of these spaces, you're gonna have a green room now, and places for wardrobe and costume changes, and all these things that are important to theater. Just asking if you ever, if like, community theater could use the space, or?
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely, you know, it, it's gonna eventually become, you know, the community, and the more things that get done there, you know, maybe kids things on Saturday, Saturday morning, Sunday, acting class, it, it, this makes the possibilities unlimited now. It, it just, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a theater guy, I'm not a, you know, I'm just a dumb contractor, but I fix things, I make things, but, you know, if somebody doesn't notice what they're doing, and we have the people that know what they're doing, they'll be able, if you give them the right tools, they'll be able to do some great stuff there.
Yeah, the support, the support in the back is very important, because you need dressing rooms, you need handicap accessible, accessibility to the stage and to the front, well, we have in the front, but in the back, stories, the carpentry shop, the dressing rooms are very important, the green room, so we'll have all that, this, the community theater, and I, when, I used to be a member of the North Fork Community Theater, so and I acted in some of those plays on the board of directors.
Oh, I need to present that.
We had, we had a very small stage there, the same thing here, and you were limited. So, actually, your stage at, well, not yours, but the school stage at the auditorium is much bigger than the Suffolk Theater stage, that's why you can have plays over there at the Riverhead High School. You know, it's a much bigger, and you have things in the back, people can dress and stuff like that. So this would make it a, a full-service performing arts center. And this was always the plan, it was phase one, phase two, so we're going ahead, commitment to community, I think the track record of the theater since Bob and Diana Vona has been outstanding. The, look, we've had everybody there from, we had Art Garfunkel, we've had-
Judy Collins.
Judy Collins, so we, we brought, we brought-
So, I'd just like to say, I think this coincides perfectly with the revitalization that's going on, especially in light of the Town Square Project.
Yes, which we're excited about.
Which will make you the center of Main Street Riverhead to begin with, and should make you, because you're adding all of this great culture, all of this great art and music, and this is what we're looking for downtown, as, as a board and as a community. We're looking for this kinda stuff to attract people to our downtown area.
And let me tell you, when those buildings come down on Main Street, and I hope they're down by the Country Fair.
No, right after.
Yeah, that's why I said it. I, when people stand there in the back parking lot, and they look up, they're gonna see that marquee.
Right.
And that's been here since nineteen thirty-two, thirty-one. So, and then when you're on Main Street, and you're standing on a marquee, you're gonna go see the riverfront. I think it's gonna be a dramatic, it's gonna be a dramatic visual positive for the town of Riverhead. And I've been here, I was a member, I was a guy, one of the last remaining guys that are alive that started the Country Fair, that was our dream back, how many years ago? Forty years ago, when we started the Country Fair, this would be the, taking down those buildings, 'cause, you know, over the years, you guys, Timmy, we all lived here, everybody said, how stupid were they, when they, they built Main Street and everything faced it and knocked the riverfront? Well, now we're opening it up, thanks to the town board and the CD director and everybody, previous boards, and this will be a culmination of a great vision for the town of, and I think it's gonna send us off into the stratosphere.
And Bob, when, I went out with Dawn a year ago, Friday, February, and we had our backs, and we envisioned, we, there was no talk about which building was gonna be acquired, and we looked at the, the alleyway, and we looked at the buildings, and we were, actually your backs was to your front door, and we're saying, this is it.
It's gonna be beautiful.
This is what we have to do.
Yeah, you stand in the alleyway, you're dead on to the marquee, and it was great.
It was like, wow, and I just knew, we just saw a vision.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful, and, you know, I, I see people come from Roanoke, and they get to those buildings, and then they kinda, and you see them come from, you know, from, from the Hyatt, you know, in, in the aquarium, and they start to, and then, and now you're gonna have it going back, back and forth.
Well, I just want you to know that you were the centerpiece, you were the core of where we started this whole project, and it's great that it's-
Okay, so based on that, we need some resolutions.
I wasn't, I wasn't here in nineteen thirty, but it looks like that theater's been a smack and a bit, you know, it, it, all across this country, theaters, that, that is where everything kinda, you know, that's like the heart, and, you know, they, they don't necessarily do great, but everything around it, the hotels, the restaurants, the shops, they do great.
Also, as part of our, as part of what Bob did here, because he was in that business, when you compare the three theaters that were built during a depression era, the FDR program, which was Patchogue, West Hampton, and Riverhead, all built the same time under that jobs program, Bob has kept true to the restoration of the theater. When you walk into the Suffolk Theater, it's essentially the same look as you had since nineteen thirty-two. Some of the other ones, they've had to make some changes, Patchogue, but, and even in the, even in the, the marquee, when we had a discussion about making an electronic marquee, which was expensive, and Bob agreed to do that, the, even our landmarks committee-
Richard.
Richard, they, they approved it, 'cause we preserved the past and added the future in there with the electronic, and that electronic, I wanted to make it an electronic marquee, because there was so many years of delay on the Suffolk Theater, people didn't believe it anymore, and I said to Bob, when the, the minute we turn on that marquee, that's the heartbeat of the project, and people start getting excited, and it's worked out perfectly.
Also, I was worried about somebody falling off a ladder, changing the little black thing.
Yeah, right, right, right. That was the main reason we did, so.
Yeah, but we, we've won every award, from the smallest to the highest in New York State, where we, you know, I mean, our competition was the James Theater, ninety-three million dollar restoration between Capital One and the City of New York, and, and they were there, and I think there were six recipients out of thousands. So we've gone from the bottom all the way, all the way to the top. So it's, it's a gem, and hopefully we can stay that gem, we just need to get this done.
So, I'm asking the town board to consider-
Vic, I just, before you move to that, just a couple of things I wanna bring up, that came up that I wanted to address. First of all, really quick, we always talk about why the town doesn't face the river.
Right.
But when you look at the historic pictures, I think it's because back in the day, I look at those old, old pictures, it was all focused on transportation, 'cause that was a main route, so it was all about the street-
And another reason is-
And boats, it was on transportation, I think.
Unfortunately, around the turn of the ninth, of the twentieth century, the back parking lot that's on the river was the town dump.
Now, that I didn't know, but-
Well, I knew that, and, and it was our previous historic, because when I was on town board nineteen, in the eighties, we, we bought the Cavan Arrow property, we made what is the expansion of the way the parking lot is today, and we added the lighting, and our electrician, Johnny Wannett, was digging in the underground thing, and he kept breaking his diamond, and we dug up, and we dug up stoves and radiators, so we went to the Jojanowsky time, went to the town historian, said, why are we finding, and she did the research, that was originally our town dump until like nineteen fifty.
And that I didn't know.
So, yeah, so that's another reason why it probably didn't-
And it was a working riverfront.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It was about, right, it was about being a working riverfront, and it was about a main street, but we're getting ready to change all of that. But just a few things, and I, I wanted to make sure the community understands, this isn't just about apartments, this is about this whole other part of it. And building the arts in the downtown area is what we want, that's what we want in revitalizing our downtown area, and the art theater, the theater is stunning. I did, you guys gave me a tour my, you know, first year in office, and if people don't go there, you need to go there and see how it was done, because it is, it's just beautiful. And yes, the marquee is beautiful, I have some, I'm always taking photographs of it. So I am very pleased with all of that. And, and just to go back to the community theater, using it too, it's great for, I was active in Riverhead faculty community theater, and there are scheduling problems with using the high school, so that's why that's really nice. But I do, you know, just wanna work out a few, there are things we need to work out that I think we can all work on. I would like to see a copy of the easement, if you could send that to me. Certainly we have to address the, the parking, and I didn't know, this project's been around a while, I didn't know if any were changes were made or tweaks were done with the pattern book, after the pattern book came out.
No. We met, we met with the Architecture Review Board. Honestly, I'm very familiar with the pattern book, they have one in Southampton, I do a lot of stuff over there. We're beyond the pattern book, if you want my opinion, as somebody who does expediting and thing right now, because if you look at our, what we've designed here, and what we have built recently in the town, there is no question, well, this is far superior than what, and this captures the flavor of, of Riverhead that I know. So I think we're beyond the pattern book, the pattern book's not really relevant here. It is relevant in some of the other projects that you might be considering, and it should, definitely should be used as a guide, but I think we're beyond that right now. So, and we are working, and we still have to go back for final approval to the Architecture Review Board, so we'll, we'll have one more round with them.
So, yeah, Dawn and I are both really familiar with the pattern book, but I, you know, I am aware that your project was started sooner, I don't think the pattern books are relevant, you know, it is important.
Well, I don't, I don't, it's not-
I know you're talking about your project, but the pattern book is helpful.
I'm talking about our project, I said, I said that, look, I've been, I've been-
Let's just stay on, on the project itself and, and not move.
I am staying on the project.
I understand, and I also know, sitting on the town board for sixteen years and reading a thousand of those reports, I have a definite, a, a, understanding and opinion on sometimes they're very relevant and sometimes they're not, okay? The pattern book that we have is good to, for future development and guidelines, but a lot of it has to come through the, the approval process, you know, when you appear before the Architecture Review Board, the Town Board for Site Plan, that's when the meat and potatoes of these projects are really ironed out.
Well, my, my question wasn't a criticism, my question was, had there been some changes after you saw that? But I am aware that this project was around previously, so.
We did make changes after we had a discussion with the Architecture Review Board and landmarks, definitely.
So, yeah, one thing with the pattern book is they do talk a lot about the amenity zone and, and things moving about, so I know you're saying that the retailer, small spaces, and work well for offices, but it would be nice if maybe a coffee shop or some kind of thing that keeps people moving about, even though it is in the back, just something to think about.
That's up to the marketplace, if somebody wants to rent one of the, the small suites and make it a coffee shop, and think they can pay the rent and pay their bills, that'd be great. We certainly have the utilities there for it, we have, we can make it a wet store, we have this, we're in the sewer district, that's up to the marketplace.
And, and I think that, you know, Mr. Castaldi, as a downtown business owner, I think you probably understand that point, that we're trying to just keep people moving about, and it makes for more of a walkable downtown, so that was just a thought. And just wanted to make sure to, that the parking rec fees get addressed?
Yeah, I mean, that'll, that'll get addressed, you know, that's due upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so that does come towards the end of the project.
I know, and we have to work that out, 'cause I've often been told that was supposed to be done earlier, but anyway, I wanna make sure that's addressed, and those are all of my questions. Certainly, I will reiterate that it's just such a beautiful building, and, no, I wasn't there in the nineteen thirties, but I did have some of my first dates there, I'm sure you did too, right, Tim?
Absolutely, a lot of the stories about that up.
I saw Ben-Hur there, so we, we were marched down.
I think I saw Dawn. I know I saw Mary Poppins there.
We were walked down by, went to Saint John's, you know, of Angela's Grammar School, and one day they took us all, walked us, we walked from Saint John's to the Suffolk Theater, so it was Ben-Hur. So, that was the old days. So, again, not to be a pain in the butt, but I really, really, really want a resolution written to start the clock at your next town board meeting, to designate the C-Quar, so that we can start the clock and get this thing moving.
I don't have a problem with that, just any other board members?
I mean, that, that's a matter of proceeding, you know, you classify an action, you initiate the coordinator review, you send out the plans. I would just recommend, you know, in order for the board to understand and that we're analyzing the right project, if they could please clarify that parking, you know, show the current configuration.
Yes, we'll have it, right.
Beyond that, you know, I mean, that's, that's procedure.
We'll get that right away, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, the first step, you classify an action, you send it out to involved agencies.
Yes.
And see what they all have to say, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, Greg, I mean, I do like to see everything prior to that, I'd like to have the things ironed out, prior to that, thank you.
Well, going through site, going through site plan, yes, I agree, you want that before you pass the resolution to, to designate and to go along, but that's not the end, because this thing never ends until we do the final, final, final resolution on the final site plan, so, and it takes-
Are you taking?
The other thing I, I just wanna say, as a, as a town resident-
Smaller ones? These are smaller.
Our projects that go through our, I know I've read somewhere, somebody said that everything is rushed through in this town and it's all corrupt, let me just tell you.
Yeah, that's a political-
Our, our reviews that take, and this is from sitting on the town board and doing the other side now, we have a very thorough and meticulous site plan review process that sometimes, most of the time, takes at least thirteen to two years, thirteen months to two years, to get to, now, some of the stuff everybody sees suddenly building, that didn't just happen in six months, that started years ago. So, we have a very thorough, and that's what this process is about, and we've been doing this now for over a year and a half.
Well, I mean, so just to be, I mean, this application was submitted in late twenty seventeen, so I mean, here we are, twenty twenty-one, if anyone would even suggest that this is being rushed through, I would, I would, I would probably check that sentiment, because four years-
And I'm fully aware, I've read it over and over, and this is somebody's not on, on touch against development here, we don't fast-track anything at the expense of the taxpayers, at the expense of the parking district, or, or, or any other thing. So we do have a thorough, uh, um, site plan, um, system in place, and again, you know, how long has it been, four years, five years?
Well, and, and some of it, it's both sides, I mean, this one took a little bit longer, and some of it is awful, some of it is this time pandemic, stuff like that.
It was a collaborative project.
Right, you guys redid the plans.
So, this looks like a really interesting, great project. I appreciate you bringing it to us.
It's been back and forth, yeah.
I know, I've been there.
Actually, it's been 15 years, but that's a long story.
Yeah, let's not go into that.
It's a very long story for another day.
We'll wait for that one.
Thank you, guys, thanks for coming.
So I wanna thank you guys, we're gonna go into executive session, and good luck, and we'll see you soon.
Well, we're gonna be back, because we have to come to 9:00, we have a public hearing, we gotta do another...
I'll be back.
Wait, can you help us refurbish the Vale Leavitt?
So, thank you. All right, so who did I remind everyone? Thank you, have a good weekend.
Thank you.
You too, thanks.
And, again, this weekend is full of activities. We hope to see everyone out there, I'm gonna be out there, and... This is gonna conclude our work session for today. In a moment, I'm gonna ask to enter into executive session to discuss the following, excuse me, guys, I can't hear, to discuss the following discussion. It's contractual matters surrounding the acquisition of real property. And can I have a first and a second to go into executive session, please?
Motion.
Second.
Well, in favor, all opposed, so move. Again, everyone, be safe, and thank you, have a great weekend.